Thank you for the food.
I'd like to open this, I forgot what I say. Like to call the city council meeting in order, this time change has got me. Like to call the city council meeting in order, if you would, please stay in which y'all already have. Councilman Griggs is going to give us our invocation and we'll say pledge and flag.
Let's pray. To Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this opportunity to join together today and be with us when we make decisions that they're in the best interest of the citizens. We thank you for this rain that we're getting and that we ask that you bless each and every one of us. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I play the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a second. No, just want to make sure that's right. Item number one on the agenda is I'd like to ask council if they would consider adjourning into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Amen.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Brown that we adjourn into executive session, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alright, we'll be back directly. Okay folks, we're, I know we're not doing the pledge, we have done the pledge and invocation at 4 o'clock this afternoon. We had an early meeting and then we adjourned into executive session to discuss personnel matters and I'm asking at this time for a motion to adjourn out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Jones that we adjourn out of executive session, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And also on the agenda, we, on items number seven and eight, we will combine both of those presentations, that's the same presenter, and number 11 and 12 will be postponed to a future meeting. Alright, y'all ready?
Yeah.
Mayor, you gonna come up here and do that? Okay, item number two on the agenda is approval of the May 3, 2018 city council meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Davis that we approved the minutes, any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over $3,000. You've got a copy of those in your pack.
That commotion with pay the bills, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Griggs that we pay the bills, any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number four is approval of purchases over $3,000.
No purchases, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item number five is presentation by the executive director of Keep Dublin Lawrence Beautiful Inc. on current activities, Ms. Patsy Baker, how you doing, Ms. Baker?
Doing fine, I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to catch up to date what went on last year and talk a little bit about next year. You have put in your packet, this green activities, it's kind of written in future tense, so I can go over a little bit about what happened at each event. Our education was to all 3rd graders in city and county schools and it went very well. And we're also in the middle of a clean campus awards competition between the elementary schools in city and county, and the winner will be announced at our awards banquet on the 19th of June. We're still judging a few of the schools, but that's gone very good. Bring away the chipper, chipped 300 Christmas trees and kept those out of the landfill and we gave away about 200 seedlings, so we hope we planted in the community. Keep America Beautiful Visual Survey is something Keep America Beautiful requires us to do. We go in a van, we might ask a few of y'all to go with us because we haven't done it yet, and check our route, we chose to check every year is 441 north to south. But we will be doing that later in June instead of February. Arbor Day was a 3rd Friday in February, we coordinated a ceremony and YKK donated a gorgeous giant American red oak at the fire station. Our Clean and Green Golf Tournament this year, we think we'll hit our mark and raise $5,000 toward our program, so that's really a big help. We appreciate your help because I know you sponsor teams and halls and a lot of support. The Great American Cleanup is another Keep America Beautiful program and we usually coordinate with Oconee High School, Oconee High School National Alumni Association. I never say it right and it gets me every time. And they sponsor the challenge between eight neighborhoods and this year was, the winners were sitting in the audience. Doug and Jean Wolfe and Anchor of Hope and then Simmons Street was second place and third place was Scottsville.
Yes.
So we appreciate all they do and when they win the prizes for them are plans to plan in a public place within their neighborhoods. So it's been done over 10 years, so the neighborhoods are really coming along and we appreciate the city sponsoring and helping us with that too. Sanitation puts out sway cars and comes back and picks up the trash. So it was very successful. I scrapped our Amnesty Day program, Deborah Stanley was fantastic at that and I helped her with Keep America Beautiful affiliates, kind of do that in other states and other communities. Atlanta kind of helped Deborah, kind of got them together and Ray worked out all the kinks and did a great job and I think they recycled over 300 tires, but the first time we've ever done it is just the city, so we hope it'll grow every year. But those came out of the neighborhoods and beside the roadways and hopefully they'll stay out. Rivers Alive was the first weekend in October and the 75 volunteers included a Boy Scout troop that collected on their canoes from the actual river stream, the others connected, collected on the boat ramps. So that was another good day. American Recycle Day was on November the 15th. We had a company, Atlanta Recycling Solutions come and they collected over 4,000 pounds of electronics with a big help from Micromanagement who cleaned out their warehouse during this time, but that was great, that really pushed us up. I serve on the tree board as director and coordinate with the tree board on hazardous trees and what needs to be planted and what doesn't need to be planted, so I enjoy doing that. Linda bin program is a program where we have portable bins. We just ordered some new signage for them, which will help because they didn't have good signage, so they always got mixed with trash, so we'll straighten that out and anybody in the community can rent those, borrow them free, just pay a deposit and then when you bring them back, you get your deposit back. We serve to coordinate with the federated garden clubs and work with greenscape, some of the medians that are in town and try to keep the flowers approval of the garden clubs since they started those beds and that's working really well. Our Spirit of Green Awards are going to be June the 19th, you'll all be invited and as part of that, we're going to roll out the new Adopt a Street program. Shawn Wood has really pushed this, he's gone to some public works seminars and it's been done by DOT and other folks before, but this is the first time we've ever done our own program, so a lot of legal things will be run in by Josh about it and try to roll it out during the summer. We already have six adoptees, Mayor Best and Premier Properties and Lance Jones and Boy Scouts and 4-H and Clean Community, so we try to get us up a group of about 10 before we really roll it out and the city will be making the signs and I think it'll be a good program. Appreciate all your support and financially and in kind, we couldn't do it without y'all.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions with Patsy?
Our chairman's Troy Wyndham, you want to say your name, Troy? He speaks much better.
Guys, thanks, thanks for the continued support for Keep Dublin Lawrence County Beautiful over the years. We ask that you continue to do that going forward. Patsy doesn't like to toot her own horn, you guys know that, but the programming speaks for itself, both in the return to the city and our tree canopy and beautification and recycling programs. Those dollars that go to Keep Dublin Lawrence County Beautiful, you get a much higher return on that than a lot of places money spent. Two, Patsy wouldn't say it, but out of 75 affiliates statewide in 2018, Keep Dublin Lawrence County Beautiful was number one in the state of Georgia. And so, big round of applause to Patsy for that. She wasn't going to say it, but it just goes to show you how much work she does and I don't know how she keeps it all together, but thank you guys and if we can ever be of assistance to any of y'all, let the committee know.
Thank you, Troy. Troy?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Troy and particularly Patsy for the great job they are doing with the cleanup project, Keep Dublin Lawrence Beautiful. I've been working with Patsy for approximately 10 years, so we are still going strong.
Deal, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, item number six is presentation by representatives of the International Committee to Mayor and Council on Current Activities, come on up. Another hardworking committee we have here.
Good afternoon, my name's Janice Nazarian and I'm a member of the Dublin Lawrence County International Committee. I've given you a little bullet point here at your position. On the back, I'd like to say that we are a volunteer committee of 15 with the names and we have some of our committee members here with us today. With us? Not all could make it, but we have had a great time serving the community. And I'm not sure when our last update was, so I wanted to let you know that we have come up and developed Dublin Lawrence International Committee logo and that is serving us well so far. And our mission statement is, "We serve as volunteers dedicated to advancing the relationships between citizens of Dublin Lawrence County and international employers, prospective employers, international residents and visitors." And I kind of like to sum it all up in saying, "We're the welcome wagon for our international community." Some of the things that we've accomplished in the last few years, we were spearheaded, we were the spearheads and helped develop and implement the International Room, the former council meeting room. That's a beautiful place to entertain and have receptions for anyone. We have hosted international guests. In 2015, we host in March, we had nine Japanese students and three adults with the Dublin Osaka City Exchange that is sponsored by the City of Dublin and YKK. This sister city exchange is on a three-year rotation. In 2016, we hosted for the first time seven adult Japanese visitors at the 26th Annual Japan-America Grassroots Summit, which is to build relations between Japan and America. 2017, in March, we had 14 performing arts students and two adults from St. Fenton's High School from Dublin, Ireland, and they thoroughly enjoyed the St. Patrick's celebrations. In 2017, we hosted a reception for the Lithuanian ambassador and several of our committee members actually hosted and entertained some of the Lithuanian spouses while they were visiting here. In 2018, this past year, we hosted nine more students from Japan and three adults for the 20th anniversary of the Dublin Osaka City Exchange and we had a celebration dinner to honor that relationship. I won't go over each one, but under the, when our host events, it tells a little bit about what's involved in hosting and bringing, making these events all happen. From finding local homes that are willing to host families to planning all the events, showing them industry and commerce and hospitality in our area. Things that we are currently doing is we are currently planning the selection of nine high school students for the March 2019 exchange where we will have nine students from Dublin Lawrence County area that will visit Japan. And the process in selecting these students is aimed at selecting the best young ambassadors able and willing to represent and promote our city with excellence. And our future goals are to continue with this, to continue with all the responsibilities that we have, some things that we have planned in the works is to begin receptions at international companies, both new and existing ones, to help integrate their employees and their spouses and families into our community for commerce, for their enjoyment of being here and to continue to help promote an international commerce for this area. And also possibly an international day or festival in the future. And thank you so much for supporting us and we ask that you continue to support us and we have, it's been a joy to serve our community as volunteers in this area.
Any questions from council or comments? Thank you.
I will say one thing, Mayor Bob Walker, when he was mayor, started this relationship that we got with, then it was Osaki, I guess. Sambongi, I guess, it was Sambongi then. And it's continued all this time, it's been a great, a great relationship that's been established and YKK certainly is a great industrial partner for this area. So thank you, Mayor Walker, and Janice, thank you for being an excellent leader.
Thank y'all very much, Bob, thank you too.
I might be lost there. Sambongi, now Osaki has a YKK plant that makes architectural products just like ours here. So they are sister plants and it kind of naturally follows that we have a relationship with our community and our community.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, this is where we'll get two presentations for the price of one. Ms. Kessler Holder, Executive Director of the Lawrence County Teen Court and the youth, is it now Youth Commission?
Counsel.
Yeah, council, I saw that on here and I didn't know if the name had changed or not.
By the commission, that's the adults.
Okay, okay, youth council. Kessler, come on up, thank you for being here.
Greetings to Mayor and council. I'll try and cram in both programs and get us all out of here before 9:00. I'm going to just some-
You'll be by yourself.
I'm going to share what it is the youth programs have been up to over the last year. And I will begin with the Dublin Lawrence County Teen Court Program. In the Teen Court Program, this is where we are making a difference, one teen at a time. We work hard and the Teen Court Program is a restorative justice program. This is where the teens work hard by volunteering. They volunteer their time as teen attorneys, teen jury members, bailiffs and court clerks. Once a youth offender enters into the program, their families discover what makes the program unique and that is because the only adult in the court process is the judge. The youth offender has 90 days to complete the program by completing the sentencing requirements that are handed down by a jury of their peers. After completing the program successfully, the teen no longer has a record. His or her charges are all expunged. We make a difference because we change lives. There are two sides of the coin when it comes to the Teen Court Program. Not only do we work with youth who have committed a crime, but we also work with a large number of teenagers who volunteer their time to give back to the community. Teens must be in the 6th through the 12th grade. Attorneys must be in the high schools. They must abide by the rules. They must sign and respect the oath of confidentiality. They must demonstrate maturity, sensitivity and responsibility. With this photo, I'm just going to explain quickly, in the top left corner, that's actually our jury in the process of determining what sentence a teen should receive. The top right photo is one of our bailiffs and he's sitting there monitoring the hallway because you can't just stand there and listen to the jury as they decide. The bottom left photo is actually before our teen attorney stood up to present their closing arguments during a case. The bottom right photo is one of our jury forepersons, she was waiting from acknowledgement from the judge before she read the verdict to the defendant and his or her family member. We make a difference because we give back. Our youth, they have completed endless numbers of community service hours. We've worked with the local fire stations, Department of Natural Resources. We've sent letters and packages to troops. We've assisted with downtown beautification after events. We've helped with the outside beautification project at the heart of George United Way. We've sent packages to schools in Haiti and many, many more. We make a difference because we care. Whether you are a board member, an adult volunteer or a teen court volunteer, we are a united force in the community and we aim to continue providing second chances, endless hugs and support in a safe zone for our local teens who simply need one opportunity to right their wrongs. This chart, it shows our numbers over the last year. We've had 30 students enter the program as youth offenders. We currently have 17 that are still completing the program, meaning they either have community service hours left, some essays to watch or videos to view. We had 53 teens who volunteered. They didn't commit a crime, but they came because they wanted to volunteer within the program. This is a total of 83 young lives who played a very important role in our Teen Court Program this year. We invite you again to come and see us in action. Our next court date is Saturday, May 19th at 9:00 a.m. upstairs in the Julie S. Drigger courtroom. Next, I will discuss the Dublin City Youth Council. Now unlike Teen Court, our teens in this program, they only serve for one term at a time. They must reapply, interview and/or run a successful campaign. We would like to thank our local school systems for supporting the program. All schools receive applications and the program is open to any eligible student, grades 10th through 12th, whether you're home school, private school or public. Our teens work daily to change the face of politics. Okay, well, our teens work daily to change the face of politics through leadership, service and community involvement. Examples of these are holding voter registration jobs, attending civic meetings, holding their own meetings to listen to the concerns of other youth. They engage with other mayors and councils while attending conferences and workshops away from home. They motivate other youth to become involved in local government. They've provided over 800 Thanksgiving plates in November for local citizens. They sent 476 pounds of donated items to Houston, Texas for Hurricane Harvey relief and much more. They've gained hands-on experience through being mentored by local city officials, by county commissioner Ms. Julie Drigger, by attending trainings and orientations here at the city hall, interviewing with 41 NBC and working locally in the community with other community leaders. Our teens- Alright, thank you. Our teens have had the honor and privilege of traveling to represent the city of Dublin at numerous conferences. They are normally recognized and remembered by their matching green attire and respectful behavior. The photos above show them smiling with Ms. Stacey Abrams, Mr. Brian Kemp, who recently announced this group of teens as the 12th district champions of his student ambassadors competition, and Mr. Matt Hatchett. The bottom row photos are showing the many teens who our youth are able to meet and network with as youth leaders. The bottom left is Mayor's Day. The middle shows our teens with a youth council group from Japan as well as youth councils from Macon and McDonough, Georgia. The last photo shows our teens holding up a Y with their arms, with youth councils from across the state at the ACCG Conference in Savannah, Georgia. This year has definitely been a year of smiles and of growth. The future is extremely bright for all of the youth coming through Dublin, through Dublin's youth programs. Not only are our youth groups in both programs, not only are our youth growing in both programs, but they are influencing other leaders in different communities. Douglas, Georgia, Waynesboro, Georgia, Fayette County, Dodge County and Columbus, Georgia have all visited Dublin simply because they wanted a Teen Court Program like ours and a youth council program to mirror ours as well. Our city was selected by GMA to host the first ever youth advisory council meeting solely based on the success and the positive reputation of our youth programs. These teens are paving the way for other teens in other communities and it is because of their hard work and their dedication of our very own local teenagers here in Dublin Lawrence County. Thank you all for an outstanding year, we thank you for your support and we thank you for your continued support and we're looking forward to a bright future. This is our group's last night together. This is our group's last night together before our new upcoming council is sworn in for their new term. So with the assistance of a few of our youth commission members, who is the adult advisory board for the youth council, we would like to present them with a City of Dublin shamrock, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Alright. So there are three tiers to the shamrocks within youth council. Everyone serving one year receives a bronze shamrock. Once you've worked for two years, you receive a silver shamrock. And for those who serve the longest, which is the three-year term, you receive a gold shamrock. I will read the following message. And then afterwards, will the youth council members please come to the front as I call out your name. "City of Dublin Youth Council, Dublin, Georgia. To all who shall see these presents greetings for having given most generously your time and talent to said city of Dublin and the county of Lawrence. State of Georgia, without thoughts or expectations of any retributions, you are hereby offered commendations for outstanding performances for the past year of service, June 2017 to June 2018." We're a little early. "Therefore, the youth commission, mayor and city council of said city of Dublin, Georgia, does hereby confer upon you- Mayor Donald Harrell. Ward 1, Ms. Kiana Jones. Ward 2, Ms. Jeliesia McCray, she actually, she became ill at school, but we wanted to call her name out still. Ward 3, Mr. Devon Peacock. Ward 4, Ms. Kamisha Mals. At-large council member, Ms. Varsha Llobatu. At-large council member, Ms. Sidney Price. At-large council member, Ms. Zalen Powell. Our city attorney, Ms. Journey Guyton. And our city clerk, Ms. Arju Charles." Thank you all.
Congratulations, guys, I know y'all have worked really hard this year and we're real proud of what you've done. You're always smiling, always have such a good attitude wherever we see you, whether it's in town or out of town, and we're really proud of you. Thank you for representing us so well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the 2018-19 budget. Mr. Jones?
This is ordinance number 18-04, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin. Section 1, it's estimated that the following revenues will be available during the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019 to meet the foregoing appropriations according to the following schedules. General fund, $17,166,642. Hotel motel tax fund, $800,000. Splosh funds, $2,200,000. T-splosh funds, $8,730,000. Sanitation fund, $2,971,862. Water and sewer fund, $6,879,645. Gas fund, $12,206,645. Riverview golf fund, $589,108. Telecommunications fund, $542,900. Section 2, following amounts hereby appropriated for the operation of the city government and its activities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019 according to the following schedules. General fund, $17,166,642. Hotel motel tax fund, $800,000. Hotel Motel Tax Fund, eight hundred thousand dollars. Splotch Funds, two million, two hundred thousand dollars. T-Splotch Funds, eight million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Sanitation Fund, two million, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, six million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars. Gas Fund, twelve million, two hundred six thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars. River View Golf Fund, five hundred eighty-nine, one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Telecommunications Fund, five hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Okay, that was our first reading. Our second reading and public hearing on this proposed ordinance will be at our June seventh meeting. Okay, item number ten is the first reading of an ordinance amending section twenty-four dash one twenty-five and twenty-seven C of Chapter twenty-four entitled Residential, Commercial, and Interruptable Gas Rate Generally.
This is ordinance number eighteen dash zero three, amended rates effective eight, ten, eighteen, and ordinance amending section twenty-four dash one twenty-five of Chapter twenty-four entitled Residential, Commercial, and Interruptable Rates Generally. Code of Ordinance, City of Dublin, Georgia.
Our second reading and public hearing on that proposed ordinance change will also be at our first meeting of June, June the seventh. As we said earlier, we will be postponing items number eleven and twelve, which brings us to item number thirteen, and that's Citizens' Comments. Are there any citizens that would like to address counsel tonight? If not, we'll go to counsel comments and we'll start with Mr. Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody for coming and all of those that did presentations, I appreciate that. The Youth Council, congratulations on a great year and we look forward to a continuation of that and everybody have a great day.
Sir. Mr. Edwards.
I thank everyone for coming and I thank everyone who made the presentations today and all the volunteers and the community it takes to pull off these programs and exchange programs and everything. And I'd like to congratulate Youth Council for all the accomplishments this year and thank you for your willingness to serve on the Youth Council and we look forward to many more years of accomplishment here locally in Dublin, Georgia.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming too. I especially want to take time out to thank Kessler and she already left, I think, but she does a great job working with the youth and what a great example you're setting for your classmates and those with whom you come into contact. And I just can't say enough about the awards y'all have received. You're working hard and you're getting some recognition and I can't help but think that's an example others will want to follow. So thank y'all so much and God bless you all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and thank you for all the presentations that was made. And also, this is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. I'd like to say thank to all our law enforcement officers for all that you do for the city Also remember, like she said, Teen Court is Saturday, so that's not just for the council. We ask anyone to come out, watch the young people in action and see what they do, you'll be really amazed. Nine o'clock Saturday morning upstairs, come out and watch that. And also remember, before we meet again, Memorial Day, remember that we're remembering all our fallen soldiers that gave their faith, that gave their life for us to have the freedom that we have today. All of us gave some, but some gave all. So let's remember that and let's appreciate, you know someone that lost a family member in battle, you know, remember to say your prayers and lift them up in prayers during this time of the year. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would just like to echo what's been said before me. I appreciate all the presentations today, want to congratulate again both the Teen Court and Youth Council for great years. Thank you, Kessler, for your leadership. I also want to echo what's been said regarding our police officers and of course our fallen soldiers as we approach Memorial Day. So just God bless everyone and everybody be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
I agree that with all that's been said regarding comments to the various groups and individuals, do want to commend the Youth Council, Teen Court also, but the Youth Council is before us and I want to commend y'all for doing a great job, having a positive and respectful representation in the city and around the state. You're setting a great example and look for more positive things to come. Thanks to all of the people that presented. I want to recognize the winners of our Clean Community Challenge that's here. Thank you very much for participating and thanks to everybody, thanks to everybody for coming.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, thank everyone for coming. It's been a long day for us. It looks like we've been down here all day, in and out. But we'd like to thank y'all, the Youth Council and everyone that attended the meeting. Don't forget about next Tuesday, you got to go vote again and cash your vote and you vote and stop complaining, you got to vote. So let's do that next Tuesday if you haven't voted. I think tomorrow's the last day for early voting.
Yes.
All right. Have a good night.
Sir. Ms. Powell.
I'm coming.
Stanley.
I'll echo what everyone has said and congratulate the Youth Council again for a wonderful year. Job well done and we will be swearing in our new Youth Council Group at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
I think it's all been said, Mr. Mayor.
Just one comment, I see Mr. Heath Taylor back on the back row. It's a pleasure to have you here. I thought you had moved. No further business, we stand adjourned.